From supplier to supplier and what the heating source is. And we don't choose the suppliers, really.
Well, how do you?
The customer, the customer. That's right.
So you give the customer the money?
No, no, the customer contacts a supplier and then we pay the supplier.
Then you'll pay the supplier, okay? Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the council?
Just one more question, if I may. How quick is the turnaround? So if someone submits an application, how quick is the turnaround?
Very quickly.
Like within a day typically?
Yes, yeah, day or it depends on the time of day probably, but yes, within a day or two at the most.
I assume the application is just shared among the board of directors and then the board votes by proxy or?
We're in constant contact and immediate contact just by phone. We don't necessarily have have formal meetings where we convene, but there are the four officers and we poll ourselves and make a decision. And that generally happens the day that we receive the application.
Excellent.
Thank you very much, Mr. Maxwell. We appreciate. Mr. Grett? Can you come up to the podium, please?
It's not working. You're gonna have to come down here.
Oh, yeah. You want to come over here?
Sorry. Come down here and join us.
The point I wanted to make is this is set up as a last resource. So usually they call the town assistance lady and one of our people talked with her. And she does her thing and they either get, you know, fuel assistance through the town or town aid or whatever. And but they have to go through all these other resources. We just don't. If the town Wentworth says, no, you can't get it. Well, they have to go through like Goodwill, United Way. They have to exhaust all efforts and we're the last, we're the last guy to help you because nobody else is going to help you. So I just want you to understand we're the last resort, okay? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear it.
Exhausted. Understood.
Thank you very much. We will move on to item 154, discussion with the Wentworth Utilities District Board of Trustees regarding its superintendent search. And we do want to welcome, I see all three members of the Board of Utilities are here. And so we've invited the members tonight as a request from our last meeting. One of our other counselors had brought it up. Did you want to?
Put me in the hot seat?
Yes.
Sure. Why not?
Absolutely.
Well, really what this revolves around is my.
No, it's not.
There we go. I'm not getting up there, Anthony. So what this revolves around is I'm well aware that historically the Wentworth Water and Sewer District has been somewhat adamant about rejecting the idea of any kind of expansion. And I understand that it's extremely costly. However, LD 1829, LD 427 and LT 997 all were past the point where, except for 97, we're past the point where we need to comply with them and they all encourage expanded housing, housing on smaller lots and two-family housing. And there's also mandates for affordable housing. And affordable housing generally means some, usually you'd say multifamily or smaller lots, two families on a lot. And we wonder if it's, if you would be kind enough to at least research, you know, what the costs are and how they could be offset. I mean, I know there's enough capacity on the line. Been told that because of the mill was shut down. So I mean, as far as running feeder lines to housing projects, things like that. And then there's another piece here where they're telling us that we're, we need to allow residential uses in commercial districts, which is going to add housing and the commercial districts already have line feeds, but it's something to think about as far as your capacity. So I see you're all three up there ready to let us have it. So you know, it also occurs to me that, does everybody here know the board? Everybody?
So I'm Roger Hanson, the treasurer.
I'm Larry Merrifield, the president.
I'm Bruce Burns, the secretary.
So Andy, I think we had a little bit of a discussion way back when I came in to be interviewed for the position.
You did?
And I think I, probably my answer isn't going to change. It is a policy of the district and a policy which is common among most major utilities that any kind of an expansion has to be done in such a way that it has no negative effect on existing customers. So that means, that means any financing to be done cannot be done by the district. It has to be done in such a way that through grants or third-party sources or through the town, that funding has to occur there because the district itself cannot fund it. We can't do anything in terms of building out and hoping that customers will connect because, you know, that's extremely speculative. And perhaps in the long run it benefits other customers, but you know, we have no way of knowing that. So that, that's a, that's a hard and fast rule for us that we will do nothing that negatively impacts existing customers.
Thank you guys for coming in. So my questions or comments revolve around the impending retirement of the superintendent. I would implore to be very careful in replacing with, I know initially, I think there's been discussion about a business manager versus a engineer or someone with some field experience and knowledge. In every organization that I've seen that happen to in utilities, it's been disastrous. So I would caution that approach. I would much, I think, in the long run, if you had to contract out engineering projects, you may want to make sure that it's, you know, in keeping with the policy of not burdening the ratepayers that you would have a good idea of what the cost would be, analysis and benefit. And also I would just remind, I know the Augusta, Greater Augusta District had done a presentation here a year or so ago about discussions about being able to administer the operations here. And that might be something that I'm sure you're looking into, but just wanted to publicly comment on that. Okay.
James?
I'll start.
Go ahead, Jim.
No, go ahead, Roger.
Want to say that, that Brian Tarbox of the Greater Augusta Utility District is going to be at our meeting tomorrow night. We've had discussions with him for some time. We know that the chairperson of the board in Augusta has been very vocal about wanting to absorb Wentworth. I can tell you that is not something that's shared throughout the Greater Augusta Utility District. That is, it's really kind of a one-man band movement. So, you know, I work, some, most of you probably know this. I worked for CMP for 40 years. I've been through two acquisitions and it's never good for the smaller entity. Generally speaking, Augusta, Augusta, there are some great people there. And they have a very strong culture of doing what's best for their customers. But what they think is best for their customers is not necessarily what's best for our customers. So that's all I'm going to say about that. But they are willing to help us, you know, in the short term. And in fact, before Dan and us is retirement, we were looking to put together a memorandum of understanding that if something happened to Dan, we were thinking more along the lines of if he was in an accident or had a health issue, could they come in and help us and we'd outline what was, what that would entail? That was primarily our biggest risk. We started looking at the risk to the, to the district. And then low and behold, before we even have the memorandum done, this happens. Dan announces his retirement. So maybe the best thing to do is just tell you what we're doing. Originally, we thought Dan wasn't going to retire till 2008. We thought in 2007, we would bring somebody in. Maybe as a quote-unquote assistant superintendent to learn the ropes from Dan. Dan's got an incredible amount of institutional memory, but that two years turned out to be two months. So the pool of people available for this position is very small. Optimally, we'd like to find another Dan. Dan even, Dan even has a professional engineering license, which is not something that's typical of superintendents or utility districts. So he's been able to do all the engineering, not all of it, a great deal of the engineering work in-house and it saved the ratepayers here in Wentworth a lot of money. We're not going to find that. We're also going to have a difficult time finding somebody who and it comes anywhere close to what Dan's qualifications are, you know, one of the, one of the major things we need and are going to need are appropriate licenses for water treatment and for water distribution. We originally, when we found out we were leaving, we put together a job description, which has been online. I'm sure you will, some of you have seen it. We put that out there. We put it out to all the major utility affiliated groups in Maine, like the Maine Rural Water Association. We were hoping that there was somebody out there who basically maybe they were an assistant superintendent and they wanted to run their own shop, hoping somebody would bite. We got nothing. We made a few contacts. We've gotten nothing. So we also put it on Indeed just for, you know, because we had a discussion about the younger, the younger generation. Indeed is a big, a big source for them for job opportunities. We got nothing. Well, we got one, application from a young lady who was just graduating from a master's program in public health. And she was doing the shotgun approach to sending out resumes, hoping somebody would bite. So we did bring in two headhunters to do presentations, hoping that one of the two would work out for us. One of them actually works. They do work in this industry. They both told us three to six months, they might be able to get somebody. And when we discussed with them the need for doing something on a much more timely basis, they just, no, this is our process. So it was clear that they, they showed no inclination to move things along, to help us. So we do have another resume that came in, independent of the things we posted and so forth. And, you know, we've, we've met with that applicant. You know, we're probably, we're not going to get somebody with a license. So what we've talked about doing is Dan is going to work for an engineering firm. And they're willing to make him available one day a week for some period of time. And they're going to make his license available, meaning we will continue. If we have somebody taking his position that doesn't, isn't properly licensed, we can work off of his license until that person passes the test and goes before the board that administers the licenses and gives a ruling on how much of this person's experience will count towards experiences working in the industry. So anyway, I will tell you that we have somebody in mind. This one applicant, we think the applicant's got a lot of experience that may not be specific to the utility industry, but has a lot of stuff that's peripheral to it, meaning they have some experience that makes it easier for them to understand what we do. And we are, well, I can't really say anything more about that right at the moment, but so that's what we've done. You know, we're in a pickle. We need somebody in that seat. We can't leave that seat open until, you know, for three to six months for a headhunter to find somebody. And so we're going to do what we have to do to get somebody there and I guess that's pretty much all I can say about that.
Any questions from the council, comments?
No, well, other than did want to say thank you for coming. And you kind of kidded on all the points that I was going to ask you, Roger, and all three of you guys up there. I know you're all smart individuals that you probably can come up with a idea. I was thinking of a contract, having come back as a contractor every now and then until we could fit the bill. So it sounds like you guys have exhausted those resources and you're already heading down the right avenue.
Now, there's going to be an expense associated with that.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
And some of you probably remember last year at this time that we announced that we were going to be having a two-phase rate increase to pay for the eight sewer pump stations that we've completely redone. It's like four plus million dollar project, but with grants and so forth, we're going to get, we'll end up borrowing about 1.25 million. And we're going to be looking at, we are looking at the amount of the second increase. We're probably going to be making some decisions at tomorrow night's meeting. And we're going to have to include some money in that case to cover what we end up paying Dan. Or if push comes to shove, it's the, you know, the Greater Augusta Utility District because they've offered to do something similar as well.
Great. Thank you.
Andy?
Yeah, so Roger, first of all, lest we wind this up without me getting a chance to say this, I know all three of yous and I'm confident that you'll work your way through this in an, in an appropriate and a manner that best serves the ratepayers. But my one question is, are there any roadblocks if, if at some point by some miracle, the mill mill gets developed into housing units? I mean, are there any roadblocks from the sewer district with?
Well, not, of course, Dan's the person to ask that question. I do know there's a pump station, sewer pump station right behind the mill. And that was sized appropriately. So if the mill were developed into housing, that it could handle it.
Okay, thank you. And I personally, this whole having you all come was my idea. If you didn't like it, or you did, I hope you did. I said, just having you all come and talk to us was my idea in the first place. So I hope you liked it. If you didn't like it, sorry. Good to see you again, Roger.
So you helped me a lot as only board of appeals, so I'm, it's acceptable.
So thank you though, really.
Thank you all very much.
I think the whole idea of the board getting to see you and know your board and, and the council getting to see you and know you and talk to you and opening a channel of open communication was a good idea if not, if nothing else.
Do get some calls from residents regarding utilities. I have to point them in the direction that the utilities is a separate arm.
Yep.
Separate board. So again, yes, thank you all three of you for coming in tonight and going through that discussion with us.
I do want to say it's kind of strange sitting here, seeing Zach sitting there. I think of him and I think he should be, he and my son should be doing, you know, making a double play or something. That's where I know him.
We'll have a good meeting tomorrow night. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to, oh, Gil. Is it a question? Is it pertaining to this? Yeah, come on up, please. One quick question. Yeah.
Gil Susie, 35 years in telecommunications from 2,000 subscriber companies to 1 million subscriber companies. And what I heard in the audience, and again, thank you for, for putting it out. No plan for growth, no plan for expansion, having problems hiring people, having to turn to contractors and maybe to Augusta for engineering help. Seems to me the path is being laid for a, for Augusta and Wentworth to join together. That probably should be something that other than just discussing it, you know, behind closed doors, it probably should be discussed with the ratepayers of Wentworth and see how it affects them. Because sometimes, again, the small companies, they get merged. Roger's correct. It's, it's not a, it's not a good impact, especially on the administrative staff. It's usually the first to go, your, your accountants and then business managers. You're always going to need technicians and then folks out in the field. But right now, when this gentleman's hired, it's probably going to be even more difficult to hire his replacement when it's time to go. So it's probably something that the Wentworth Utilities, and again, I'm not here to tell them how to run their business, but from what I heard from the audience, we can, we can almost see where the path forward looks like. So thank you.
Thank you, Gil.
Respect to Augusta, that this is a temporary assistance thing only. That we have no, frankly, we have no interest in joining with them. I mean, if only as a last resort, I guess I'd say.
I don't know if we can get Roger that video, the, the meeting when they came to the presentation. I asked them specifically and they said at that time, they had no interest in taking over. However, they were interested in providing administrative assistance without a takeover. So if that has changed, but look at the meeting, watch the meeting if you can find it, or maybe we can send it to you before your meeting tomorrow, because that is what they pledged here.
Sorry?
And, and so they came, they did a very good presentation. I appreciated it, but I asked them specifically if that was their purpose and they said no. So just you can let, you can lean on that if, hopefully that can be something you can utilize.
Let's, let's, let's use Hollow Water District as an example. They did that. They operate the, the water district. And, but they don't actually, there's a, there's a separate board for Hollow. So what they get is they get one, Hollow gets one board member on the Augusta board. So you tell me how much influence does Hollow have in making decisions that affect them?
Yeah, I mean, but they, like I said, they, they said that they would leave our board intact. Watch the meeting and.
Yeah, what I'm, what I'm telling you is that's what, that what they're proposing is what they did to Hollow.
Well, that's a different proposal than what they gave us.
Gets one board member in the Augusta district.
Yeah.
Linda, you have a question?
Well, I need to, I need to emphasize, and it was mentioned earlier, that the district is separate, is separate from the town.
Is your meeting tomorrow, is that a public meeting?
They're all meeting.
Are they recorded?
No, we don't have the, we don't have.
So nobody can go back and re-watch them or anything? Okay. Tomorrow night?
Yeah, I mean, we have a vested interest in the district, which, you know, is set in the charter as well. But we appoint you to do the day-to-day stuff, but we definitely still have a broad interest in what goes on and those decisions. So I would just, you know, if you need assistance or need leverage, we are at your disposal.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that. And as representatives of the town, we're interested in what you, what your opinions are. I just want to make it clear that decisions made in the district are made by our board. And, and I actually have a copy of the legislative charter with me today. I guess that came up to be, you know, an issue.
Can I say something?
I just want to confirm your meetings tomorrow night at what time?
Six.
At where? Location?
Well, at the district office, which holds about eight people.
Okay. All right, Andy.
Yeah, I, I just want to point out two things. One is I certainly didn't come up with the brainstorm about inviting you here with the thought of steering you in any particular direction. I'm well aware that you're an independent board. Roger, I knew how you thought about the expansion and I remember that we appointed you anyway. Okay. Because we knew you'd be a good, a good member. We just really wanted to get you to know you, and I am 100% opposed to losing local control. We would, to the extent that we had the authority to do so, which may not be much, but we, we wouldn't, I wouldn't at least condone that.
Oh, I know, we know what they're offering. When you say look into it, we already know what they're offering. What the what?
You don't know what the rates.
Well, initially they wouldn't change. The question is what would happen after they started administering them? Now, the board would have, presumably have control over that, but the, you know, the organization that's doing the managing of the, of the system not making the rule, not, not setting the rates, separate group setting the rates is, there's a lot of potential there for conflict. I'm not pooing the idea. I'm just saying, I personally, and, and, you know, I'm not speaking for the board in its entirety, but I've been through this twice and I don't want to see it happen to Wentworth. Because the downside, in my opinion, is greater than the upside. And I also want to reiterate that there, that, that Ken that you referred to is the chairperson of the, of the Augusta board. He's the proponent of this. I know, and I can't name names, but I know the people in the district are not interested in doing this. So, you know, you've got to, maybe a potential conflict between the board chairman and the rest of the organization. I don't know the details. I can't tell you for sure who is for and who is against, but I just, based on my own personal knowledge of interactions with people at the district.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the audience? All right, moving on to item 156, discussion and consideration of an artificial intelligence town policy. And we've had a couple of local residents. We've had Gil Susie and Timothy Adams working with our town manager, putting together this and making updates. Have a great night, gentlemen. Thank you. And so I think that they presented a dated artificial intelligence policy. Yeah, please.
Gil Susie, again, make a couple of points on the, on the policy. First of all, Anthony and his team over here and as well as MMA have done a great job putting this together. We're going to be one of the first communities, if not the first in Maine, to have an artificial usage policy for their employees. So very, very pleased with that. It protects the town, it protects the residents, and it protects the employees at the end of the day. That was point number one. Point number two, I guess I want to be, I want to, I don't want to warn the town council, but these, these, there's 90,000 AI companies right now working on some form of artificial intelligence. Anthony and his team have chosen six or seven to do, to do the town's work. They might not be in business, some of them next year, I guess. So if Anthony, you know, finds that he needs to change something on the fly, it's a very dynamic industry, as you can tell. Obviously, Google and then Microsoft are not going to go anywheres. But ChatGPT, which we're all relying on right now, again, they're having trouble raising money. You know, when no money's coming in and money's going out, you can only hold that. But I'm not saying that they're, they're in trouble. But some of the other companies. So again, just, just to be aware in the council that if Anthony decides to switch from Claude to Fred or whatever, that this stuff can be done rather quickly and seamlessly. And it's not because Claude was not a good pick to start with, at the start. All right? Thank you very much for your time and I encourage the town council to vote for this policy tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Gil. And so I did notice under section four, under the business used by employees, you did list out some of those different companies. And so I would expect in the next few years, we'll keep an eye on that and monitor that as we need to make any kind of revisions. Go ahead, James.
Yeah, and just after reviewing it, I would agree with, with Gil. I mean, it's a starting point. We got to, you know, got to have something on, on paper and in the books. And, you know, it can be a fluid document, as we say, as everything changes, as we move forward. But I think having something put down on paper is a great place to start. So I support it.
Yeah, I, I think Gil used the perfect word when he said dynamic. I mean, obviously this industry is going to change. It's going to happen. Yeah. And it's going to happen quickly. And so, and so these are just pre-approved, but that doesn't mean that these will necessarily be the only. tools that we'll be using in AI. And, and I think it's going to be incumbent upon us to, because of how quickly the industry is moving, probably to review this and bring any sort of necessary changes to you guys more, on a more regular and timely basis than we would most policies.
Does the policy, do you have an outline for a process to approve additional AI innovations that come forward in this policy?
So, so that is something that would be up to the town manager.
Does that say that in here?
Yes, it does.
Specifically.
Yeah.
Yeah, Anthony, this is, I mean, it's just very ethical, right? We're just trying to make sure that this is whoever's using it and within the town is using it in a, in a proper way, right?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think we, I think many of us see the benefits of using artificial intelligence, but it doesn't come without risks. And particularly, I mean, the greatest risk is you absolutely positively cannot use private information on an open source AI platform. And so I think it's incumbent upon us to, to encourage our employees to use it, but to do it in a smart way that doesn't put our citizens and their information at risk.
Totally agree.
Oh, yeah, actually, you know what? I forgot to put a motion on here, but we do need a, a motion for approval.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, I guess, how do I read it without?
Approve as presented?
Yeah, I guess they had to approve the artificial intelligence town policy listed in item number 156.
Any discussion? All in favor? All are in favor. Thank you very much, Mr. Soucy, and I think Mr. Adams is online. Thank you very much to the MMA and to our town manager and staff. Thank you. Moving on to item 157, discussion and consideration of a capital asset planning policy. And this is something that our finance director, Nick Pula, has been putting together. Yeah, please.
Yep. So Anthony's memo really actually spells it out. He took a training, when he got back from the training, he mentioned that this is something we should look into and, and formalize our process. Right now, we don't really have a formal process. It kind of gets thrown together during the budget process. So what this policy does is just formalize, you know, there's dates that we follow. Department heads now have to fill out a form if they want to, you know, propose something. And also outlines how the actual plan needs to be laid out. It's 10 years before our current plan, it ranges from 10 years to four years and stuff like that. So this just sets a firm date of time where how far we have had to look out and stuff. So is there any questions on the policy?
I saw that it's anything over 5,000, aside from the policy I just asked Anthony earlier. Have you started compiling that? Does our, seem like there's a very extensive list? I mean, do we have any generators or anything that are over $5,000? Smaller items, things like that?
I've only gotten a few lists back. So I mean, the big department that this is really going to impact, I guess, is Public Works, Transfer Station and stuff. He's still working on getting all this stuff together. Other, like the library doesn't have much. I mean, we'll have a reserve for his building, obviously, for any repairs that needs or anything like that. Police Department, you have the cruisers and stuff like that. Ambulance, he gave me a list, obviously his, his vehicles. I mean, didn't itemize to the point where like computers and stuff like that, unless they buy in bulk. I mean, me and Anthony talked how we're going to handle that. I mean, the library mentioned, well, they have shelving that's worth way more than 5,000, but they usually place one or two every year rather than buying bulks. That's not really a capital improvement item, so.
The only other thing is I saw this was adopted November 11th, so I was going to say, what am I doing here?
Yeah, and I want to thank Nick. I think this is, like he said, this is just really going to give some structure to our capital improvement planning and, and our budgeting to, to ensure that we're addressing it in a systematic and strategic way. And, and with the asset inventory that he and the directors are working on, that's going to ensure that we know what the replacement schedules are for different pieces of equipment or vehicles and, you know, maybe even facilities.
Nick, have you had a chance to talk to the superintendent about how the school utilizes any type of capital asset?
Well, it's funny you mention that. We had our first budget meeting today and that did get brought up. We didn't delve too much into it, but it is on our radar. They do have a fund, there's not a lot of money in there that they use for capital improvement, but that is on our radar.
And I just, I just want to put out there that, you know, and I, and I plan on addressing it in the charter commission as well, is that it, we really, moving forward when it comes to budgeting, financing and policies that govern the budgeting process, granted, this obviously is on the town side, it's not practical to think that we can move forward with policies and planning financially while one side does one thing and we do another. And now with you interacting with both, I think it's important when we move forward with any type of financial policies regarding how we are going to budget, that we engage the school committee, if they are adequately informed, or at least the superintendent, to make sure we can streamline our two processes as much as possible, because we can't, I don't think it's reasonable for this board or this body to make a budget and go through a process without having a clear understanding of what the school is doing. Just, I just want to put it out there, just comment in general, that's where I want to see us go, but this is a great start, I like this, but I just would like to see the school, since especially since, you don't need to be doing two different things for the same thing.
And I mean, obviously, last year, we, it was a very brief discussion of capital improvement just because of the situation.
Correct.
This year, I'm sure.
I know we're rebuilding and trying to get there, but I just think it's going to be so important for us to be able to do a job in creating a budget to know where they're at. I mean, it's not, it's just, it's lun, it's, to me, it's ludicrous that we do two separate tracks and then come together in March and hope that everything fits, right? We just need more, yes, there needs to be, and I know, I believe Dr. Foley is supportive of that, and that's the only reason we got to where we were able to do things sustainably last year is because at least I think members of the council took it upon themselves to make sure we were involved in the process and informing ourselves in the few, I just, in the future, I want to make it so we develop policies that really reinforce the importance of that.
Yeah, and, and like I think like today's conversation ended with, well, Joel will handle a lot of the capital improvements and he's putting together, minus, he's putting together a list or has a list of things that need to be done and stuff.
Yep. Perfect, and I appreciate all your work, because no one has taken it on until now and, and doing it. A masterclass.
And I think that's going to be helped, Aaron, by two things, actually. One is having a finance director who's also serving as the business manager. And so I think you've raised a good idea. And so tomorrow, assuming that this policy passes, I'm going to share this with the, with the superintendent and, and suggest that maybe this is something that they ought to be considering as well. And as you know, she's interested in, in capital investments and capital improvements because she talked to you guys last year about setting aside a kitty of money in order to start addressing capital needs. So, yeah, yeah. And, and I think the other thing that helps is that Dr. Foley and I have a really good working relationship. In fact, she and Nick and I sat in my office for a time today and we're, we're noodling around some ideas and some issues that, that we think are, are shared. And so as long as we, as long as we have a superintendent and town manager who work together as opposed to or at odds with one another, and I think that's partly because we both respect one another's role and so I stay out of her lane and she does the same with me, but at the same time, we collaborate and cooperate, and I think that's vitally important.
Any discussion? All in favor? All are in favor. Thank you very much, Nick. Item 158, consideration of October 2025 disbursement warrants. Nick, review? Disperse.
Second.
Any discussion? All in?
None, Nick.
What? None? Good night. All are in favor. Thank you. Item 159, consideration of recommendations from the appointments committee.
None at this time.
Okay.
Putnam apply for?
That was last meeting, I believe, wasn't it? Wait.
Uh, she has applied, but, but, but we didn't receive that application in time to put it on, on this. What was it, Andy?
Treese did what?
Was it the downtown committee?
No.
Treese Savory was last time, you're saying?
No, no, no.
Patrice Putnam.
Patrice Putnam has submitted an application, but we didn't receive it in time to put it on this.
Okay.
Has Deb sent that?
No.
To you guys? Okay, I'll make sure that gets sent to you tomorrow.
I, I can't remember for the life of me now.
You don't remember which one?
I think it was the downtown committee, but I'm not positive about that. No, 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 we're talking about Patrice Putnam.
She's a former counselor that did the last, yeah.
So moving on to other business, I'll open it up for public comment. We have someone in the back, please, we have a, the mic is now available. Yeah, see?
New to me, my name's Ron Taylor.
Make sure you get right into the mic, so that way.
Yeah, you get tired.
Public comment is not related to anything you discussed, but I'm asking for a direction on how to proceed with a presentation here or consideration in solar power and Winthrop. I would say an out-of-state power company has come to town, is building sites with out-of-state workers and has total disregard for, about an property owner's rights. Be happy to make a presentation on that, or how do we, how does that come up for discussion? And the answer, I mean, in my, in my mind, perhaps the permit and process.
So, Mr. Taylor, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
You have concerns about solar, solar development? And it sounds like about a specific solar development?
Yes.
Have you spoken with our code enforcement officer?
As far as I've gotten with that, he views it as a, a right-of-way issue.
Well, I'll tell you what, so I don't know that this is necessarily the form for, for your concern.
There we go.
Appreciate that. So as I mentioned a little earlier, my business card is on that table, right, or that desk right behind you. If you'll pick one of those up and call me tomorrow and let's make an appointment, we'll sit down and chat.
Ron, before you take off, where, kind of, where are you looking at? What's the, can you give me some of the nature, context?
Been my entire life.
I know.
And the Boones Trail Farm, they blatantly pushed material for no benefit to their project blocking access to my property.
Okay.
Years I've been asking for, just, just fix it. I see, nicey on the phone, but getting them to show up or do anything hasn't happened.
Okay.
Maybe you need Troy Jackson's bulldozer.
Sorry, sir?
Troy Jackson's bulldozer. You don't remember that story?
No.
All right.
No, Ron, Ron thing, I just was kind of, just kind of curious of where you, what your concern was, so thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, no, I just would like to be able to get to my property again.
No, and if you have any trouble, you should, Anthony should be able to straighten it out, but if not, come back to us, please. We're here for you. Thanks, Ron.
Thanks, Ron.
Is there anyone else, Anthony, online? Any public comment? Not, I'm not seeing any, then it would be the town manager's report.
So a couple of things, I, earlier today, I emailed you folks our unnecessary noise ordinance. I had a citizen who came by last week. He is a, he's a neighbor of the, the White Duck and was concerned about the volume of some of the outdoor music there and wondered if this council might consider putting some, like a maximum decibel level into the noise ordinance. So before we begin that process, I just want to make sure that, first of all, you guys are interested in at least considering that. And if you are, then at that point, we'll go and do some research to, to see what that might entail. Well.
It was specific to that venue.
I was going to say, in my experience, the planning board has made a specific permit that there's not an ordinance.
No, no, so, so you may be confusing our special amusement permit with the noise ordinance. So, you know, in, in order to get a special amusement permit, an applicant has to come to you and there has to be a public hearing. And if there's concerns about noise and they're sort of addressed as part of that, that permitting process. Right now, our unnecessary noise ordinance addresses some very specific types of noises like air brakes. And typically, the only parameters is you can't make any unnecessary noise between 10:00 PM and, and 6:00 AM, which my understanding is that's not the case in this instance. But the volume is such that it is disturbing to some of the residents. And so just from prior experience, I know it's not terribly unusual to have decibel levels dictated in a noise ordinance.
Not, and I'm, I'm, I tread cautiously on, on something like this, especially with the business. I would entertain you to do some research and see what other people may have done and maybe to see what's the acceptable decibel levels and maybe how can we measure it? I mean, I know there's a way to measure it correctly within so many feet and how the effects are, but I'm not looking to, to over-regulate what we have for too many noises because I think we have stuff that's within the time parameters, you know, that, that, you know, at 10 o'clock, most of the stuff is supposed to be really most of a quiet time until 6:00 AM. So, but I'm happy to have you do extra work, Anthony.
So what I'm, what I'm hearing you say, Jim, is, yeah, let's go ahead and do some research, bring that research to us and from there, we can decide whether or not we actually want to pursue any sort of change to the.
Yeah, I think it's important to hear what the, what the constituents may, are looking for, but, I mean, yeah, yeah, we should. Or, or something.
I have an idea what case this is and.
No, I agree.
I think the biggest part of the problem is that the bandstand is about 50 feet from the gentleman's window. And I'm not sure it matters. How, how low the band plays, he's gonna hear.
Here's my concern, or, or I guess my preference, is I have no desire to have a town-wide ordinance that's going to dictate noise levels. I think it's not reasonable. Good luck enforcing it. I do think that we should look at the permitting for special venues and these events and, and look at it that way. If you want to throw in a decimal level and timing there, I think that's appropriate. And then also, I think we have to be, and I've mentioned stuff, you know, as far as the planning board making arbitrary requests and conditions on permities, which I don't think is appropriate if it's not codified in, in ordinance. That's our job. So I, I personally would just like to see it in the special amusements permitting process that we consider in, in that situation. I mean, obviously, this, I mean, what's going to be acceptable? We have no idea.
So, so I think if I went ahead and did the research, then you, it wouldn't necessarily be an amendment to the unnecessary noise ordinance, but it could be an amendment to the special amusement ordinance, so that that becomes a consideration in the permitting process.
I think there's more teeth with that. No. Right, and then if we establish there's an issue. Yeah.
It's just talking to the owners.
Exactly.
Be cognizant.
In this particular instance, they, the neighbors have tried that, hasn't, haven't been successful. There's still some things that, some discussions going on about how that manner might be mitigated to some extent. But the homeowners that I've talked to have said that it wasn't, the first two years it was fine. This year, things seem to be much louder than in, in the previous two years, so.
More, like, level or frequency, like there was more events?
Yes, both.
Both.
The other thing too is, you know, it could be the business could potentially put up some, you know, sound, you know.
And that, and that has been discussed as well.
You know, that's another option.
Okay, but I, I think Aaron's got a good, I think both Jim and Aaron have a good idea. So I'll do the research and then we'll look at, to see if there might be something.
Easier to enforce.
Right, okay.
I mean, the, the townwide ordinance thing is like asking the PD to go out and control the noise of fireworks on Port.
We'll let Anthony continue, please.
So we had a, a meeting on. So we had a, a meeting on Friday between myself, the director of the YMCA camp and the Monmouth Town Manager. It was a really productive discussion about what our recreation program may look like moving forward. And so Mon, the Monmouth Town Manager and I are going to meet later this week, start drafting some ideas to see how the, the Y might fit in there and how the Y might be able to serve both of us, and we can serve one another. So I'm just, I'm encouraged by that discussion. So, so stay tuned for more on that. And likewise, the grant application that we submitted for the re-roofing of the wrecked building, we got a good first initial response to that grant application. So we're hopeful, and I've gotten some more quotes, and it may well be that we're able to replace the roof and then also have some funds left over from that grant in order to address some of the flooring issues in that building.
Anthony, and you may have said it, I might have missed, are you also talking with the Y director as well with that, or no?
So I'm talking to Lonnie's boss.
Right.
Okay, so Jeff Gleason is the gentleman's.
Yeah, yeah, I know Jeff, yeah. I just, that's what I wanted to say.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, obviously, Lonnie's not going to be around after August, and so we need to be, you know, look a little further out.
When you do that, can you, when you come back with that information, can you also kind of just, because I don't exactly know how that works.
Well.
Can you just let us?
So one of the things that Jeff did provide me during that meeting, which was helpful, is apparently there's a memorandum of understanding between the town and the Y that dates to 2016. I'm not terribly comfortable with that memorandum of understanding, simply because it says the town manager will supervise the Y's employee. That does not seem to be a good system. So, so I'm working on some changes to that, that, that I want to talk with Jeff about, and then we'll bring it to you. Because ultimately, the, the council has to execute the memorandum of understanding. So, so anyway, so good news, I think, on, on that front. Earlier today, we had a meeting of myself and the town clerk, the library director, and a citizen who's helping us with our website redesign. Really good meeting, so I'm really encouraged by that, and we're all really excited about what the website's going to look like within a couple of months. I did send to you folks last week, I believe, a proposed budget calendar, and I just wanted to make sure that no one had any, like, terrible conflicts that would prevent them from participating. And if that's the case, then we're just going to, that's going to be our calendar, we're going to.
I say lock it in, and then we'll, we'll work around it if anybody has major conflicts from there.
Okay. Good to, good to hear.
Agree with Jim. It's really hard when you start changing dates, you know, and trying to catch up. Oh, this date changed, but I already had it written down, and I told someone else I couldn't be here that day.
And we vetted holidays, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, because I can block out ahead of time stuff.
Yeah. A couple of smaller matters. Let's see, today's the 17th. On the 19th, the mess that's in the small conference room is going to get fixed, so we're going to have new carpeting and new baseboards there, so that's good. Just a reminder, next week is Thanksgiving week, so our offices will be closed on Thursday and Friday of next week. Tomorrow night at 6 o'clock, there's a charter commission here, and there's been some email exchanges here today that I think you guys are involved in, so you might want to check that out before the, the charter commission meeting occurs. I got a letter today from the Maine Labor Relations Board, and there's going to be a decertification election regarding the general employees unit. So those employees will decide whether or not they want to maintain any sort of union representation. We will know the results of that election on December the 22nd.
Who that covers again?
Yes, so that is our Public Works, Transfer Station, deputy clerks, and finance assistants.
Is there an issue with current advertisements positions saying they're union?
Oh, well, for the moment, they are. Let me think about that, Aaron. Let me think about how we, how we broach that. And, and then lastly, our next meeting is on December the 1st, and I would like to engage in another discussion about town office hours during that meeting.
Not working.
What?
Thought things were going good.
They're going good. We think they, we think they might, might could get better. And that's.
One piece of other business. If you could please put on the next meeting's agenda that the planning board wishes me to make a report about their current activities, what they're thinking of.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I think that when we all got a sign to the different boards and committees, I'm not quite sure that we explained what our individual duties were to be. So in my case, I just asked the planning board to tell me what you want, and that's what they wanted.
Okay.
Liaisoning to me.
What?
That sounds like liaisoning to me.
They're going to get together and, and put up a little portfolio together, let them know what's going on.
Yes, I just want to say publicly, we can hear, thank you for all your support in voting me in, including everybody here at this table. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Did we get any updates on the paving?
It's done for the season.
So did, did we get everything accomplished that wanted to?
No, so all those streets that are down there around Turtle Run, that's going to have to wait until the spring.
Okay. Got you.
All the streets around, yeah, the paving. Right.
Move that we adjourn the meeting at 7:09. Any discussion? All in favor? All right, thank you very much.